...of April 2nd, 2019 is now open. Uh, please call the roll.
Uh, Floe McWhorter.
Present.
Harry Farwicke.
Present.
Sam Newton.
Present.
Mr. Callen, absent. Mr. DuSono, absent. Mr. Wood, absent. Ms. Curling, present. Mr. Gold.
Present. First order of business, I'll understand a motion to accept the minutes of the March 19th, 2019 meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. First case tonight is Locust 164 Blossom Street. Petition, uh, petition of Patrick J. McGrath by his attorney, Paul Keating, to grant a use variance for the construction of six-story self-storage facility with less than the required open space in the waterfront, Zone 1 District. The meeting is now open for those in favor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is Attorney Paul Keating, 39 Exchange Street, Lynn, Mass. This is Patrick McGrath, One Border Street, Lynn, Mass. We're here this evening seeking a, uh, a variance for both use and for our minimum open space requirement. Uh, if you look behind you, this picture of what is presently at 164 Blossom Street, which was the McLaughlin's, was the McLaughlin's Transmission Center, is now a vacant building. Mr. McGrath would like to construct a six-story state-of-the-art office self-storage building. Uh, people who use this building would have a code to punch in. They go through garage doors, which are glass, and glass on the other side. They would remove their goods, put it on the elevator, go outside and park, and bring their goods up to the storage facility. Now, this storage facility will have, uh, surveillance cameras around the perimeters on each floor, and emergency call boxes on each floor to protect minimal, uh, problems dealing with the city. There will be no, uh, school effect, whatever with students, minimal requirements regarding police and fire, and of course, nothing with the DPW. Presently, this property provides about four, uh, $32,000 a year in taxes. This facility would provide 15 to 20-fold that, more than the $600,000 to $700,000 range. Now, some may ask, why do we need a facility like this? We need a facility like this in the city of Lynn, because presently you have over 80 units being built on Monroe Street. You have, uh, 30 units on Oxford Street. You have 300 units on the Lynn Way. Mr. McGrath is building 24 units, and these units, according to the size, are basically 600 to 900 square feet in units. So they need storage space. So we would ask you to grant this petition this evening. Mr. McGrath would like to say a few words.
Well, my name is Patrick McGrath. I live at, uh, One Border Street, and, um, been in business here 48 years. I've done numerous projects throughout the whole city. Um, presently, I have, um, little over $300 million of property that I'm in the process of developing in, in Lynn alone. And, um, myself, with all the units that I have, um, being designed right now, it's in excess of 650 units. It's going to generate a lot of tax money for the city of Lynn, and, uh, I love the city of Lynn. I just moved here, back here, um, well, I just built the house up in, in Lynn for a long time, but, um, I think it's a lot better than what's there. I mean, I, I can continue to have a repair shop there. We don't need any more repair shops in Lynn. We don't need cars. I mean, you can, that's existing. That was done from a drone about a month ago. And first, that versus that, I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty obvious that it'll be a lot nicer. And, um, you know, I have all the support, all these people are here supporting the project, and, uh, I think it'll be good for the city of Lynn, especially in the financial state Lynn is in. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind, too, if you would consider this project. And, uh, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Well, a lot of the workshops that are going up, I'm sure this is going to get a lot of money just from that alone. And there's a lot of these places already, so you can even wander the way, does that White Store, which is also six-story, is high. I called all these people today. They're only half full. I, I thought that we wanted the Lynn Way to be the gateway to it. This is going to be so beautiful. Everybody that are in Lynn, and the people in Swamp, getting involved here, are going to try to go to Boston, come home, and see beauty. That is not beauty. If that was the time for how, it wouldn't go on there, as far as I'm concerned. That, the, the White Place, people don't pay, they have auctions there. To me, the land in Lynn is very valuable right now, and that's not going to languish if you don't do it. Something wonderful is going to come there. It's bad enough to have, on the other side, on the water, there will be a, what's that store, it's on there, Walmart. And to me, this is just another giant awkward thing that goes ahead. It may be wonderful to you, but it's not wonderful to me. I, I just don't think it belongs in the city. You want to build it, build it somewhere, yeah, way down, when you don't see it. But to me, that is right on the Lynn Way, and that's all you're going to see is that, that ice door. And that's how I feel.
Uh, do you see any site plan or anything, public, just standing around? Do you guys have anything else?
We submitted site plans, but you have submitted.
Oh, you did, oh.
So with the site, um, something how you guys plan on mitigating, um, access water coming up from a site, so I know you mentioned it won't be any burden to the city. Uh, we know of the flood issues in the areas, open alleys in Blossom. Are you guys planning on mitigating that water issue over there? Are you guys planning on, um, going back to the city, old age, infrastructure? Are we planning on?
It's all on-site. It's all storage on-site.
Storage facilities on-site?
Yes.
Okay. Just need to get a chair a little bit up. Sorry. So maybe you move on to the next question.
Any other questions? I have just wondered, is there any environmental issues with that lot back to get it addressed?
No.
Well, we can, Floe is looking at you. We can move on and have other people speak in favor. Yeah, all right. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Please come up, give your name, an address.
Hi, Darren Sayer, 50 More, Neil Ave, Lynn, Mass. The City Council's President. Uh, we, um, sent a letter to the board tonight. The entire city council is in favor of this. Reason being is, we are faced with the financial issues in the city, and this will generate roughly between $600,000 and $700,000 a year of, uh, tax revenue. We have a budget in the city of Lynn of over $300,000. Throughout residential and commercial businesses, we generate maybe a hundred and, maybe $130 million a year in tax revenue. So we have to look at all different ways of, um, bringing in more revenue with, here in the, in and now. I, I don't see any developer coming in here, to be honest, and this is not to be disrespectful to any of the board members, to come in here and build anything that's, uh, better than this facility right now. Maybe in 10, 15, or 20 years, there's a possibility of that. I mean, my entire life, 60 years, I've been hearing about the Blue Line. Where is it? It's not here. We're talking about a ferry on the, the waterfront, and, you know, we've come close, but it's still not here. We moved the power lines 10 years ago. We're working towards doing some development that's down there. We got to pick one area of the city and start working, which we have. We're down on the Beacon Chevrolet Site. Building 19 Site is going to be changing in the next few years. Down on Monroe Street, the city council has taken some really extreme, tough votes over the last several years. Most of them not popular votes to move this city forward. I know there is some opposition, and I get it, you know. I would love to be able to say, as a city council president, that I'd love to see a hotel there. That, in that location, I'd love to see a multi-apartment building, uh, duplexes or condos.
If you don't mind, if I can just jump in real quick here, you know, would you comment that, you know, the past 15, 20 years, you haven't seen anything, though, that's showing that we're moving forward? When we go out in the lane, you know, we, we've seen that. We're seeing the improvement in the city. So I think, out of Ford's head today, we're determined what the future will look like. So you can't say, you know, you're not anticipating in 12 years, 15 years, something will be better than this. It's really, it can truly happen.
Anything can happen. Anything is possible.
Right.
But if you're in the here and the now, and, and this building is going to generate $700,000 a year, as I said, I've been on the council for 14 years, and I'm looking to move the city forward, and the reason the city is moving forward is because of the city council, to be perfectly honest with you. Monroe Street wouldn't have happened without the city council, no matter what anybody tells you. Beacon Chevrolet Site would never have happened without the city council. What's going on with, down at the Building 19 and, and the Port Hall, that's going to happen, and the city council is going to play a role in that. And tonight, you are up to, you play a role, what's going on there. This is a depressed area. It has been for a real long time. And the people that are down in that area, I believe they want to see a building like this. And there is going to be a need for, with all the apartments that are going to be built in the city of Lynn. This is a state-of-the-art facility. It's not a low-level, ugly-looking building like the ones that you see down on the Lynn Way right now. Drive by that, it looks like an office building. $20 million is what it's going to cost to build that building. You're talking about $500,000, $600,000 in permitting alone. So, and that, that is a building that can help move the city forward. And in 10, 15, or 20 years, if the developer does come in here and wants to put a hotel there, because the land's that valuable? Pretty sure, because Pat's a business guy. He's going, he's going to say, yeah, it's time to sell, and let them do that. But I mean, you know, we've got to look for ways to raise revenue coming into the city. These are commercial taxes. So I'm in support of it. I know the council is. Everybody I've talked to, including Sean Cronin, who's the overseer for the city. Financially, it makes sense for us to vote for that, to approve it, especially in the condition of the city right now. I wish we had, I really, truly wish that we could say, hey, in 10 years, they're going to build 15-story hotel there, and everybody's going to want to come and vacation in Lynn. I wish that, that could be the truth right now, but it's not. So I'm in favor of it. The council's in favor of it. Thank you for your time here.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Favor.
How you doing? Fred Hogan, 17 Lagrange Terrace, I'm Ward 6 City Councilor. I live in the area. I live off of Blossom Street. I live on Lagrange Terrace. I'm a married guy in the area. I frequent the Brickyard all the time. The area looks terrible. This here is going to definitely brighten up the area and make it look better. Believe me, I, I go to the area, I frequent it, I see it, and, and we need something like this here just to make things look better in the area, just to try it. And then the taxes that it's going to bring in is very, I think it's very good for the city. And Darren hit a lot of points, uh, from the, uh, city council, just taking.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. How you doing? Jay Walsh, 16 Radden Street. I'm the Ward 7 Councilor, obviously of Bud's Ward 6. Just a couple of things I want to say. So tonight, I, before I came here, I picked up the original 1977 master waterfront plan. 1977. I was born in 1980. Talk about vision, right? We've been waiting a long time for something to happen down there. I bet you if you took a copy of the 1977 plan, you looked at the one we've been redoing over the course of time, all the same stuff's in it. I mean, it's there. I mean, someone's willing to do something. This is primarily a commercial area here. We need business. We don't just need residential. We don't just need apartments in the city. We need some sort of commercial tax base to keep things moving. That's what this area is down there. And this is a great improvement to the type of development that's been down there over the years, which have been primarily body shops and, and mechanic shops. And you know what? Those are the people employing people in our city. I mean, you know, it might look grimy, it might look gritty, but I mean, I want to knock the people that have been down there, working hard and trying to support the city all these years, when everybody else seems to be turning their back on us here. So I would employ you to vote for this. This is something that, that makes sense. This isn't just a grimy type of building, and they're going to look good. And think about the 1977 plan. I mean, my dad keeps saying a lot of things, I'll never get done, you know, we dead and buried, is the term he keeps saying. And I don't want to wait anymore. But people willing to put shovels in the ground here, and I think it's something that we all got to look at here. So I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Bill Trahan, 226 Western Ave, Lynn. Um, as you know, it's good to see everybody, by the way. I've been here a while. As you know, over the last 20 years, 18 of them have been our Lynn City Councilor. If, I'd say I've got, you know, a pretty good handle on the fiscal stability of the city and what the city needs. And, you know, you can't continue to put the tax burden on the ratepayers. We need commercial space. There's no one coming here right now. They're not going to come. We've got a, we've got a gentleman here who's been in, in business for the city for, what, 48 years, I think I heard Pat say. He's a guy who's got a proven track record. He stands behind everything he does. He gets the job done right. This development here, it's not, I know, Gene, I don't want to, you know, speak against you, but the building is, you know, to me, is, is a pretty nice-looking building. It's not the Taj Mahal, but it's a pretty nice-looking building. It's better than what I thought it was going to look like. Um, it's going to have no, it's going to have a $600,000 tax bill coming every year. That's a lot of police, fire, teachers, whatever. Everything that we need. We need, we need all three of those things, more of. Our classrooms are over, you know, 30, 40 kids. We need more teachers. We need more DPW workers. I mean, we can go on and on where that $700,000 would be spent. Now, if we continue to just push everything aside, every time something comes, I mean, if someone's coming to put a hotel up, I think it's wonderful, but out of nowhere, I see, got local guys, like Pat McGrath, that have been for 48 years, that have a proven track record. He uses all Lynn contractors, our union, whichever way he's going to go with this project. He uses all Lynn guys all the time, because he is a Lynn guy. He takes care of people. He never comes in and his projects ever ask for a tip. He doesn't ask for any tax incentives. He doesn't ask for anything. He builds the building, he pays the big, to the permit, whatever it is, and he puts the building up quickly. And he stands behind his work, and he's going, you know, he'll take care of it. It's no impact on the city. No impact on your schools, this building. It's no impact on your police. It's no impact on your fire, God willing. And, uh, you know, it's, to me, it's a, it's a win-win. No one's in line to, um, develop this piece of land. No one's coming. And we just can't keep throwing the burden on the ratepayer, because then you're going to have all those people start to leave. And then what are you going to have? You're going to have an empty city. So, uh, I, you know, I'm glad to see that my former colleagues are all behind this. I think it's a wonderful thing. I know it's not the mayor's vision, and I certainly don't want to speak against, uh, Mr. McGee. I've been, uh, you know, my whole family's been in support of him his whole life, and his father, but I just think the city's crying for this right now. We can't just, you know, we can't keep throwing the burden on the ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm David Solomini Jr. I live at 39 Joel Circle here in Lynn, and I've known Pat McGrath since before Jay Walsh was born. And, uh, and I want to just reiterate what, um, Bill said about Pat's character. Pat's a Lynn guy. Anything that he's touched, real estate-wise, has, has been done well. It's been completed on time. Uh, I'm assuming on budget, but anything that Pat's ever put his hand to in the city of Lynn has been done well, and I think that whatever is built here and whatever Pat does on this site will be built well. And as a guy that pays in excess of $100,000 in commercial real estate taxes to the city of Lynn, I'd like to see more commercial tax base in Lynn, and I think this will address that. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rick Staubert. I'm the Ward 2 City Councilor. I'm also a member of the Lynn Way Market Street, uh, Business Committee for the council. I'm a member of the Lynn Area Chamber of Commerce, where I chair the, uh, Government Affairs Committee. Like my fellow colleagues on the council, I'm in favor of this proposal. Um, it will go a long way to helping to beautify that area of the Brickyard. It is not on the Lynn Way. If it was on the Lynn Way, I wouldn't be in favor of it. It is separated by two lots, a vacant lot and another property that houses Enterprise Rent-A-Car. Enterprise Rent-A-Car is a major corporation that's not going anywhere. If I owned that property as a tenant, I wouldn't let them get away. In fact, with all the proposed residential units proposed for the Lynn Way, business will only get better for Enterprise and Hurst down there. This is a building that's beautiful, will generate much-needed tax revenue, and will be an amenity for the 1,500-plus units proposed for the Lynn Way. This is where those folks that'll live down there will store their goods. So for those reasons, for the tax revenue, it's a beautiful building. It's not, you know, a square, center-block box. It's a beautiful building. It provides much-needed tax revenue, cleans up an area that is desperately in need of being cleaned up, and is off the Lynn Way, but I think will help improve what goes on the Lynn Way. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Brian LaPierre. I'm a city councilor at Lodge. I just want to offer my citywide perspective. Um, a lot of the arguments have been made, really, uh, so I won't take too long, but I do want to reiterate what Attorney Keating and former counsel Trahan said about the, um, lack of school impact. When you have a commercial business such as this, you're not looking at, you know, usually when you approve things with residential, it always involves children, or, or overburdening an overcrowded school system already, this does not even come into consideration. Um, you know, I, I think it should be said that it's not every day that the unanimous approval of this council, 11 folks, sign their name to a project of this magnitude. And, um, we are all in support 100%. Many of us here tonight, as you've heard, even testify along with the submission of our letter. It just shows that we know the importance of this. We know that this can be a catalyst for future development by Mr. McGrath and so many others that are investing in this city. He's finishing up a project right now down on Western Avenue. It's clean. I ride by the lot every time. He keeps his properties pristine. People work. It's locked up. It's secure. I can't say enough about the quality of his work. As a matter of fact, before I was born, he will know, that, uh, he renovated my parents' kitchen on Chatham Street in 1972. So I can attest to the 48 years of being in the city as a productive businessman and resident, and, uh, of his good stuff that he's doing across the city for many, many years. So I do urge you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Brian Field, 9 Lower Slane, Lynn City Council. Again, I echo my colleagues on the city council supporting this project. To know that area and what it was, and what it still is, and what it will be if this isn't approved, that, you know, that burden falls on, on us as a whole community. When, we had to take a vote earlier this year for the Procopio property on Monroe Street. I thought the most important part of that was dealing with somebody that's a local developer. And, and that really got me into thinking that this is something that is important to them, because they're right down the street. That's what Pat's been, um, his entire life. It's not a, a big-box company, even corporations like the General Electric. They're not based here in the city. The people that are making the decisions are outside the city. Pat can do whatever he wants with that land. It, it's beneficial to have the, you know, we've already covered all the commercial tax base, everything, all the benefits to that area. I don't see what else could benefit that area and fit in that area that would succeed. That's my personal opinion. I don't-
Can I give an example?
Sure.
Um, yeah. If, you know?
Yeah. Please.
The area with bent water is, do you envision something like that in this location? Not, not the same scale-
Of what? I'm sorry.
Bent water and pad, pad express, think it is?
Yep.
Do you have a vision of anything like that in the same parcel?
As a competitor, bent water? I, I don't, I haven't seen or heard anybody interested in that type of development. Nobody's come to the city council to-
No, you made the comment where you don't see anything in-
Sure. I, I, I don't want to see the businesses that, that particular property have to leave. They're providing jobs. They're providing a service that the city needs. The, the, the impact on the city in that area, the neighbors, that neighborhood, is minimal with what's being proposed. It improves the, the vision of that area. It'll improve future projects along that area for families that are considering moving to a smaller condominium, downsizing from a house, still needing that storage area. Those facilities are going to be filled. Personally, I rent a facility in the city. I would, I wish something was, was similar to this. I knew how much of a, you know, a, a task it was to, to look for a facility that was small enough that could fit the stuff that I needed to fit in it. I, and, and again, I, I don't want to see the, for the impact for that area and knowing the neighborhood, uh, I think this is the, the, a responsible decision to the ratepayers and to the commercial tax base within the city. So I thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm ready. Hi, my name is Fitzroy, and I'm a traditional person. I came to the city now, I've been here 20 years, so. I'm really surprised, this is my first time coming to something like this, and I'm really surprised that we're not celebrating Pat McGrath, a guy who lives in the city, because where I come from, I'm always believer, if you believe in where you come from, you're going to make sure it's better than what it was before you got here. To put that kind of money in a storage place, you want to come to my building and see a storage place next to mine? Would you like to have my building and put something like this there? It's the beauty! I'm not sure we're thinking of aesthetics, of what is really the conversation's about. Why see investments? Tax revenues? Mr. Mayor, tax revenues? Let's get it going! Let's celebrate it! I mean, if nothing else, I would like to see Pat having a meeting here, and saying, whoa! That's a plan! The fact is, he was born here, invested here. I'm from the Caribbean. I'm invested here. I adopted the city. How many people in this room was born here, invested here, and developed in the area? My gosh! Pat, God bless you, man. I am so proud of the fact that people like you doing what you can to make sure that the city revenue increases. A storage building looking that beautiful? What the hell's apartment doing? If you look at the one next to me, it's been, the neighborhood's been changed almost 10 times since I've been in that area, so. I would say, sir, madam, whatever your, your role is in the city, let's embrace them some really positive change in terms of people locally in the city, putting revenue in the city so we can really make it a beautiful place, because right now, I remember when I first got here, it was a scary place to be. It's changing. It's moving. Let's embrace the change. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else?
Can you just give us the address? For, for the record? The address. Your address. Your address.
Oh, West 21 Pleasant Street. Traditional prices. It's the only big great town, so.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bibby. I'm the president of Bibby Real Estate Corp. Been doing business in the city of Lynn as a commercial real estate for, for over 35 years. Principal place of business is 319 Lynn Way in Lynn. Um, a lot of what I was going to talk about, I even have notes, because I do, I like surveys. I did a survey of Alley Street and Blossom Street. On Alley Street, all of those properties combined were about 14 properties. The assessed value is approximately $7.5 million, six acres of land, to do half of what you can get on this one parcel. And this is very sympathetic to the new construction apartments that they're going to build. Most of these today are smaller than we're accustomed to. People know what a typical three-family looks like. The units are 1,200 square feet or whatever. There's a big demand for this. I was involved in two of the three, I know you don't want to hear that, but two of the three that were here, and that industry has come a long way. The blue building that you see on the Linway right now is probably 20-something years old compared to what this is now. These are full-service, full-weather. You can get, you can chill them, you can heat them, you can do all kinds of things. I just think that the biggest thing, I mean, we're even having conversations, for example, with the, Mr. Cronin. They're not sure that what's going to happen with the school bond because they're worried about whether the city can pay the bill back. I mean, this is nuts. And if this will pay $600,000, $700,000 in real estate taxes, I think this is something, I mean, in the 30 years that I've been here, and certainly since the Sasaki Plan came into existence 10 years ago, not a single building has been built along the Linway. Either side, waterfront, the rail line, anything in between, not one. So I think the Chicken Place was the last one that I can remember, which was more than 10 years ago. So, I mean, this is an opportunity. Let's not let the perfect beat the, the villain of the good. This is a great project. It works for the city in terms of the revenue that it will generate. And compared to, as I say again, with the 12, 14 properties on Alley Street, this generates triple the revenue that, that all of those properties could do it. And it's sympathetic to the apartments. This is something that people will want when they move here. I just think it's a great project. It's get something done. You've heard it from enough people. It gets something going on the Linway. I know we have a, a large project on the North Harbor piece underway. But when those people move in, they're going to wind up needing these as well. And by the time the rest of the Linway is done, you know, there's going to be great demand for these, and there is right now. So I'm very much in favor. I think, I can't think of a reason, the footprint of something like this and the activity, no police, no fire, no children, no, I mean, it's just a terrific middle ground before we get to the Taj Mahals. So I'm in favor, but I think it's a great job.
I think it's a good-looking building. I don't have a problem with the building. I have a problem where it wants to be put. Yes, maybe we do. We will need it later on. But don't put it there. There's too many other places you can put it that I don't have to go down the Linway and look at it. I did not think that that was the city council's vision of the Linway, the gateway to Lynn. That was not what I, what you expected. It's not what I expected. When I moved here, my mother thought I lost my mind. You're going to go to Lynn? The whole place was boarded up. And I says, you know, man, as long as I don't leave the ocean, I'm not in trouble. It could only get better. And it has, better and better and better. And that's why I sit on the floor. But what I think is that the best interest of the city of Lynn. And yes, we need taxes. What about all the pot shops? Aren't there any taxes on all those pot shops? I think you are. Everybody else seems to be.
Can I answer that, Gene?
What?
Can I answer that?
Go ahead.
We're not going to get as much from the pot shops as we're going to get from this building. And the council does have a vision, but unfortunately, right now, as Chris said, Saki Plan goes back more than 10 years. Not one building has been built.
What about Walmart?
What about it? Well, you, you, I heard you say earlier that you didn't like the building.
I don't like it on the ocean.
Okay. And neither do I. And that's why we're in the process of trying to work with the property owners to see if we can get them to sell it. Pat owns land right beside it, and he's in the process of actually developing that. 750 apot-
550.
550 apartments. It's $750 million.
All that, all that's going to be tax money.
It, it will be, but it's residential. This is something that, right now, is on the table to be built. And the council does have a vision. We agree with you that when you're coming into Lynn, we want you to be able to, you know what you see when you come into Lynn? The General Edwards Bridge. You see the old West Lynn Creamery, which I don't even know what they call it now. Car dealerships, all up and down the Linway. This is off the Linway. No one's even going to see it if they do drive by and see it.
It's a stone's throw off the Linway.
Right. And if they do drive by and see it, they're not even going to know what kind of a building it is if you take a look at the building. We have to start somewhere, and this is the perfect opportunity to start developing that neighborhood down there. It's depressed. There's nothing down there but single-story buildings where cars are being worked on, and buses are being parked, and commercial vehicles. And at least this here is going to not only increase the value of the properties down there, but it might give other people a reason to either sell their properties or to develop it. And who knows what kind of development we're going to see? You have to start somewhere. I mean, I'm sick and tired, to be perfectly honest with you, Gene, of people coming in from the outside telling us what we need in Lynn. We've been hearing about that for as long as I've been on the council and before. I like what this gentleman just said about a vision and being able to come up with something down the road. That's why we, we got the building going up on the North Street in the Beacon Chevrolet site, which I got to stop calling it that. It's the North Harbor site. But there's a lot of things that are happening in Lynn, and that can contribute to it. It's not going to do any harm. It's not going to have an impact on our schools. And as I said, right now, we bring in about $120,000 to $130,000 a year in tax revenues. Our budget is over $300 million a year. We just had a discussion today about insurance and what it costs us. In the last 10, 10 or so years, the insurance has gone up 180%. We pay for that, the taxpayers. As one of the other councillors said, we got to start taking the burden off of the homeowners. And by bringing in commercial property, that's bringing in $700,000 a year in taxes. There's no other commercial property in the city that does that, other than the GE. And they come in every year whining and crying about how much money they have to pay to the city at one. This is going to be an opportunity for us to maybe buy a fire truck, fix our roads that we're always talking about, the potholes that are everywhere, put money into our schools. The average school in the city of Lynn is over 100 years old. Yet the voters don't want to build two new ones. So we have to do something. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I, we're both passionate about the city. I know Bill is more passionate than you are, Gene. I appreciate that.
We do watch kids go walk, you and I.
Yeah, we do.
I do like you. I do go to your fundraisers.
And I appreciate that.
Just because we don't agree-
Right.
Doesn't mean you can't be friends.
No, at all.
All God knows.
Me and Tommy are friends, and we disagree tonight, so.
Is anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Tasso Nicolaopoulos. I live on 19 Pride Path. I actually live on 111 Western Avenue. One of the things that we're missing here tonight is, being a member of the Lynn Chamber of Commerce for the last 10 years, three major studies have gone through that chamber and gone through the, and the city council has read all those things. And one thing we agree on, we need to expand our commercial tax base. That's one of the things the study's been telling us. We're, we're commercially poor city, so we need to expand that. Another thing is aesthetically, if you look at that building, if you go to the Garden or the Fleet Center, it's the same model. The Fleet Center is, it's good enough for Boston, it's good enough for Lynn. But the thing is, is what's important here, is this gentleman put the extra effort to make sure that building looks acceptable to our eyes. Who are we? I mean, I, I, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. You and I can, I agree with you. We need a movie theater, we need a hotel, we need a marketplace, we need a coming center. But that's just a small puzzle. And Linway, many of the experts said about the Linway, it's so complex to build and design because it has so many multiple parcel owners. You would need major, major developers that take, that buy miles of land to develop, to fix the Linway like we want it. That's why it's so complex. This is one puzzle. Your, the puzzle you're talking about is going to happen. But we're going to get there. And I applaud this council for being proactive and being pro-business because for a long, for a long time, the business community and, and city government were not as close as we should be. But I've seen that, that bridge is happening, and it's, and we're all working together. So I applaud the city council for taking that stance. Those restaurants will happen because I want them to happen just as bad as you do. I sat, you know, when I first came to the Chamber of Commerce, I didn't know anything. I was just a sandwich maker. But I, and I wanted a movie theater, I want a hotel, just as bad as you do. But it's, it's a process, and we have to understand it. It's not exactly what we want. We'll get there. There's going to be some fights later on that we have to really put, you know, a stronghold on a developer to say, hey, we need this here. But today, you're right, we should be applauding it. That's a beautiful building. I beg you to find a better-looking storage facility in the state better looking than that. Other than that, I do know this guy. But even if I didn't know him, I will be here supporting this development today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Manny Alcantara, former DPW Commissioner on Lynn. And I am just here in support of the project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Manny, can we get your address? Address.
86 Woodlands South.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde?
My name is Douglas Hyde. I no longer live in the city of Lynn, but I've had a business there since 1979. And you drive down the Linway, there are many buildings like that. They're decrepit buildings, they're not well-maintained. It's not a, it's not a pretty drive down the Linway. And from 1979, I've heard from Bob Baker, all the waterfront proposals. I bet I've heard four or five of them. Lynn's Waterfront, it's beautiful. Where else can you have this type of waterfrontage? I've seen more proposals, plans, improved plans, subplans. Nothing ever happens. It's been that for 35 years. You have a building like this, a guy, Pat McGrath, who does beautiful work, and also not, there's no burden on the schools, there's no burden on the water and sewer, there's no burden on anything as far as utilities go in the city. And it's just, you know, there's just, something has to happen. I've been hearing about the, I've been hearing about the blue. All due respect to the mayor with all of this. The blue line's come in Lynn for 35 years.
70 years.
Well, but I remember 35. That's why your father was pushing that as well. But I mean, it's just, things don't happen. You have a building, it's a beautiful building, the tax revenue, it's crazy. It's on the west side of the Linway. It's not on the east side, the ocean side. To me, it's just, it's crazy not to consider, seriously consider that. We've been hearing about Lynn's waterfront forever. I'm in total swan.
Address, please.
Address?
I know I live in Lynn. Salem.
Sorry.
Salem. I'm in Salem.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else hearing?
Wait a minute. I'm, uh-
Just made.
I just want to echo Rich Calucci, 265 Ocean Street. I want to echo what my friends and my colleagues said. Ditto.
Thank you. All right, so the hearing's closed. For those in favor, do we have any letters?
Hello. My name is Omar Guerrero, 225 Union Street, Lynn. Every time that I see any project in the city, I always look into other cities where they're trying to emulate or date or their founders. And I notice cities like Edgerton, Somerville, Metford. We're trying to do what they're doing and being so successful about it. And every one of these cities, you see projects like this, they go along, with whatever residential they do. So these projects are part of the city, are part of the success. It's not like we're doing something here that is not part of it. This is, they're doing it all over. You go to Saugus, Disney Project, residential there. Dear, across the street there. Let's go, drive to Route 16. Everything, big projects, residential. Everything that we hope we have in the city, they do it. Right across the street from those projects. It's a building like that that is being built, and obviously, it's not as beautiful as this. Look, my point about this is, this building is not against everything that we're trying to do. It's part of it. And they prove that. It seems that it has success. And we're really hopeful about it. And this is there. My other point with this is that China is, is commercial real estate. It's a completely different business today than 20 years ago. And very soon, it's no more business. No more people that want to open businesses. It's Amazon and all this online, it takes over the city. So if the city expects or hopes the commercial real estate and taxes is coming to the city, I believe it's a mistake. I'm not a genius, but I believe it's a mistake if you look in the future. No, it's extremely hard to rent today a retail place. Unless it provides some type of service, which involve manual service, like a dentist or beauty salon. It's nothing else that it will be open. So when we're looking to this commercial, I just want you guys to look into, a little bit into the future, because commercial revenue to the city is not coming. And this project is part of what is, that is getting done in the different cities, even inside of Everett all over. It's not that it doesn't go quick, but we're trying to accomplish. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, the hearing is now closed. Do we have any letters of support?
Well, we have a letter, a page and a half, signed by every city councillor. I'll be glad to read it, but what it states is every single thing that every one of you said here tonight.
If you'd rather not, you-
No, I do.
No, you're right, Gene. It, it doesn't, it's, so it's a waste of time.
No, it's not a waste of time. It's just that-
It's redundant. No, it's redundant, right. So I agree 100%.
I appreciate what's up to you.
No, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Just if you can add it into the minutes of the meeting, that's all.
Okay. All right, the hearing is now open for those opposed. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project?
I don't want to get in the way of those opposed, so. I just want to say I know Pat McGrath a lot of years as well. This is not about Pat McGrath, so. I have a letter, and I'd like to read it to the people. And Brian, I was senior at high school in '72. Is Brian still here?
Not yet. I'm still here, man.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say good evening to the members of Lynn Zoning Board of Appeals. This is my first appearance before you in my 15 months in office, and I think it's important that I'm here on this issue. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the variance request for 164 Blossom Street. City of Lynn is on the cusp of an economic resurgence, particularly in our downtown and waterfront areas. Since taking office last January, I've met with dozens of developers who have successfully completed major projects locally, as well as across the country and across the state. They want to invest here and share my vision to think big when it comes to Lynn reaching our full potential. In the process of completing two major planning documents, the Waterfront Open Space Plan and the revision of our Waterfront Master Plan, which will have the best practices, recommendations, and directives for implementation that will guide our city through this exciting time. The parcel at 164 Blossom Street is considered a transit-oriented development site. It is uniquely placed and has unlimited potential. It is three blocks from our commuter rail station, bus terminal, and several hundred yards from the ferry terminal, I'll say, state-of-the-art ferry terminal, where in a few short years, we're waiting on our ferry, we will have our own boat operating. Two blocks away is the educational carer, where substantial investment is currently being made at St. Mary's Junior and Senior High School, Kipp Academy, and the new YMCA. The parcel is also 800 yards from Lynn Harbor Park's 60-acre public open space project, which is in the process of happening directly on our waterfront. And from the North Harbor site, a 322 residential unit project that includes public access to the water and a boardwalk linking to the ferry terminal. And that work has begun both on the roadwork, as well as the revetment that will make that project a reality. Additionally, we are pursuing earmarks that were included in the state's 2014 Transit Station Barnville for a traffic examination and multimodal improvements at the Blossom Street-Linway intersection. As we continue to reimagine the Linway, we recognize the importance of connecting the waterfront on both sides of this roadway in a cohesive and constructive way to better serve area residents and increase economic opportunity. Not only is the proposed project non-conforming to the waterfront Zone 1 requirements in terms of allowable uses and open space, I also have significant concerns regarding the increased traffic it will produce at any and all hours, and the limited permanent job creation and sales tax revenue it will generate. Lynn should not settle. Boston South End and Seaport District, the City of Chelsea, Wellington Circle, and Rivers Edge in Medford, the Wind Casino in Everett, all of that development took place in areas that were formerly underutilized and blighted parcels in those respective communities. Those communities had a vision that has resulted in positive change extending far beyond their neighborhood. This is about all of us having a vision for Lynn. Decisions we make now have an impact in our community for decades to come. Approving these kind of proposals exhibits a substantial lack of vision of what Lynn could be and what the citizens deserve it to be. I do not believe this proposal makes Lynn a better place to live, work, or raise a family. It is imperative that we think big and create a vision that improves every neighborhood in our community. Lynn should not settle. I ask that the proposal variance is not granted and this proposed project be reconsidered. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Thank you very much.
Mayor, do you have a second or question? I just have one. Can you stop all, more about the traffic concerns?
Uh, I, I reached out recently to the, you know, I know there's a proposed, part of the proposal related to what the traffic would be.
Sure.
And if you look at studies that have been done, so I got some information related to that, on similarly sized projects related to about a hundred thousand square feet and the substantial more traffic that has been a part of those projects, and if you look at, when you're proposing these projects, that a traffic study should be done to reflect exactly what the impact would be in the neighborhood at all hours of the day and night. So the numbers that are in the proposal are substantially lower than what would be the recommended or the identified type of traffic that would, this kind of a facility would create. So I think regardless of what happens today, I think the traffic study and the impact on the area, and I know you mentioned the water impact, but I think more importantly, the traffic impact absolutely should be part of if this project, I would hope the project does not unfold, but if it does, I think that's an important piece.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Is it, I, I don't know how far, how long you are on the, the city is on there, taking a look at revising the master plan and where this is now, like you said, waterfront district. Is there any, is there any thought on that side of the Linway to do any commercial areas?
There, within the next month or two, we'll have the final plan on the table.
Because we have probably granted fifteen of these type premises, not of the scope, with the whole Benoit, the whole, you know, the rehab of the Linway. And I'm just saying this, so what kind of conflicts are we going to expect? We had to approve almost every vendor to go in the old Lynn Lammers site that Nick Menino did RHR on. And then there's talk that maybe the person who owns the former factory across the street that's now there, which we granted permission for the storage of vehicles, has got the same plan once the city fixes the sewer system down there. That's a major impediment, and you're not going to see much of anything until the whole water reconstruction gets approved. So, I, you know, I can say this, I, I agree with what Billy Trahan said, that we need to basically look to, look ways to, you know, to expand our commercial tax base and create space for that. And, you know, I don't know, I, I just look at that side of the Linway and maybe, we'll see what you, what, what they, what the experts come up with, but I hope there's some consideration to expand commercial space over.
There's a number of, number of pieces of that, you know, the, the Gurelic Farm site, the substantial interest in that, and I think the waterfront master plan, including what we call a working waterfront, is, is an ideal location to see the kind of mixed use as well as light industrial and other commercial proposals that have been proposed, that have been suggested. I think looking at whether breweries or commercial kitchens and other uses are the kind of commercial investments that aren't going away, but are actually being strengthened. And if you, you know, and I've had a chance to walk around the downtown much more than I have in the past, I've walked to that site, I've driven to that site, I've walked the waterfront and walked over to that site, I have taken a serious look at this site that we're talking about. And what I, what I've really come to realize is, we are such a compact community that when I said two blocks from the YMCA, a stone's throw from the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, literally on the Linway, I think it's important for us to recognize that we have all of these pieces together. And I don't think it rules out that commercial is part of what we should do. So I think as part of the waterfront master plan, you're going to see a broad range of suggestions, that I think when you're talking about waterfront one, there'll be, there'll be other suggestions for other potential uses. So I think that, you know, I believe that, and I think it is part of what we're talking about. It isn't just creating a bedroom community, it's creating jobs, but it's having a vision for what that means. Uh, you know, I was in Anchorage, Alaska in, in September, talking about how we reimagine the Linway and actually looking to make it much more of a parkway than a, a speedway. And we, we actually went to an area which is a pretty heavy industrial area that had in the past been, you know, a place people wouldn't want to go. There's three breweries, there's restaurants, the, the whole area which is still industrial and creating jobs is a, is a magnet place for people to come and, 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 and socialize. So there is, there are definitely models out there, and, and, you know, if you go over to Wellington Circle and you see what was there before what was there at the, at the train station, it was, it was pretty much of a wasteland. I was at Rivers Edge last week, and as I walked into the, into the entranceway of an amazing development in, in Medford on Rivers Edge, if you haven't been there, you should check it out, and along the wall, they had a, they had a whole picture of the whole stretch of that area, what it looked like, and it basically looked like the picture on the left here. And if you go over the other day, you see that Medford, Walden, those communities came together and said, we have a better idea of what we can do. And it's not just housing, it's housing, it's jobs, it's, it's creating opportunity for that area. That's, that's what I see as a vision. I, again, I, I know, you know, I know a lot of people in this room, this isn't about anybody specific, this is about what we view the city of Lynn and how we envision what we can be. And I, I believe our time is coming now. We're uniquely placed for those things to happen. The work is being done on, on the three twenty-two beacon, they've started pouring concrete on a project proposed in March of last year, they're going to build ten stories right across from the train station. We're looking to reimagine the Shaws, we've met with the Shaws owners, and we've talked about reimagining that as a, as a mixed-use development with, with restaurants and retail and similar to what they have there, which is, is successful, as well as residential above that site. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of interest, and literally, that's a block and a half, two blocks away from what we're talking about here. So this isn't, this isn't like a mile from where we see things happening, it's literally on the edge of what's going on right now. So again, it's not about a specific person, a specific site, a proposal, it's about what do we see for our future. And so, you know, I, I took this job because I, I was hoping to move some of these things. I'm sixty-three years in the city, so I know the same concerns and frustrations that many people behind me have. But I think we have to recognize this is a great community with great opportunity, and we need to take advantage of it. And that's why I'm here today to testify in front of all.
And we should take, what the president has information over seven hundred, eight hundred thousand tax rate. We should take on that. And he also called the CFO.
I, I, it's a great question, and, and I work with the council, I know we're really struggling financially.
Right.
Uh, but I think, you know, I not only think, I believe, and I know we should, take a look at a broader vision. I think if we're, if we're looking at one site for one, a bit of money in a three hundred and forty million dollar budget, is that the right proposal for today and for tomorrow? And I think we need to make decisions based on what we believe is good for today and for tomorrow, and we can't lose sight of that. Yeah, we, we are definitely challenged financially, but there's a lot of things we need to do to address that. One location with seven hundred thousand dollars is not going to solve the problem we have, yeah, it's absolutely going to help, but the question is, what are we doing, what are we going to build off, and how do we build off the developments that happen to create the real kind of revenue and income the city needs that's going to allow us to get out of our fiscal crisis we face? Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will close the meeting for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
I think we want you to deny.
Is there a second?
My second.
Your second? All right, a motion made by Mrs. Curly and seconded by Mr. Wooton. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Carwood's to deny.
Agree.
Mr. Wooton to deny.
Agree.
Mr. Mackey wants to deny.
Deny.
Mrs. Curly to deny.
Deny.
Mr. Cole?
No. Proposal has to deny has passed. Project has been denied. Well, I'm in a recess. All right, the zoning board meeting will stop the recess and get back to business. The next case is 48 Saunders Road, petition to Neighborhood Development Associates to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling in an I-1 single-residence district with less than the required area and less than the required frontage and proposed parking within five feet of the lot line. Hearing is now open for those in favor.
Peggy Phelps, Neighborhood Development Associates, Ten Church Street, Lynn, Mass. I'm also here with Chuck Faye from Posses and Faye, Surveya. We are proposing to build a single-family home on a lot which we demolished, another single-family home which we purchased from the city of Lynn. Inadvertently, I, I went ahead and while we were doing the demolition, we actually installed a foundation. Totally my, I have to take full responsibility, totally my oversight of my interpretation of the zoning. I felt that we could build by right because we weren't making the situation any worse. I was quickly corrected by the building department, and I, one, I stopped construction right away and filed the necessary paperwork. So for that, I do apologize, that was totally my misunderstanding. But we're here today to ask for a variance for less than the required area, frontage, and parking within five feet of the lot line. And this is the proposed home that we're going to be, it's a single-family home, it has six rooms, three bedrooms, and one and a half bathrooms.
You guys want to?
Yes, I do. I, oh, I don't have the picture of the house. The, the house that we actually tore down was, was a very small shack, it was like a cabin.
It was a camp that they, yeah. That was just repaired.
It had four or five different types of foundations, it was really a mess. And I think that the, the proposed home will really benefit the neighborhood. We've worked with both neighbors, both of Butters, they were actually here earlier this evening, and they left because they were here too long, but they're both in support. And I can, I can also get a letter from them if, if the board so wishes, but they are both in support, we've worked very closely with them. We've actually helped one neighbor on the right side of the, of our property, we're going to deed them over a small sliver, we're going to actually give them a right-of-way over a small sliver of land on the right side so that she can have her parking space.
Peggy, on your right side facing your house, it looks like we're up here, it looks like you started building a retaining wall.
No, that was there.
That was there?
That was there, yeah.
That was the edge of the old pool.
That was the edge of the old house, and what we did is we left the foundation in place so it wouldn't compromise.
Sticks in there, sticking out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that, but until we get the, the property stabilized, we had to lead that so she wouldn't cave.
Yes, that was my second question, how are you going to schedule that, that right-hand side?
Once we backfill.
We're going to backfill.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating cutting that wall down to finish grade, maybe you cut four inches below finish grade, and then moving it in there, you know, so, so that, that wall stabilizes.
Leave it for stabilization.
If we took that wall out completely.
No, I thought you might have been going higher, to be honest with you, that's all.
No, we're going to actually go a little bit lower than that, because she, actually, she's a wonderful lady. She was happy that we did it because the house sat so close that there was a watershed on the driveway that would ice the driveway up. So I asked if she had any complaints because we had some issues with the temporary fence, and, but then she's, I'm, I'm happy because I didn't have to worry about my driveway actually helping with that. And you can see her driveway does, you should come around on your old house, so we're going to keep the driveway there and give her an easement.
An easement, a right-of-way, yeah.
And then the, the other, this is their, their fence presently, which is in on their own property. The housing authority normally puts new fences on property lines, so their question was, if you put your new fence, where are you going to put it, on your property line, obviously? So we said to them, you can, we can move your fence over if you like, giving you more width. Or we'll just take your fence down and put a new, a new vinyl fence up there, like, like we normally do. The, the, as you can see, the original house was, was a foot to, about a foot and a half up the property line. We shifted our home over so that we have eight feet of zoning, and we have nine feet over here. To get two parking spaces in that require, we had to ask for the five-foot variance because we're about two and a half feet up the property. After rear, and then a little backup, took like seven or eight, nine feet, we have probably five feet on the average. So that's it.
I'm seeing landscaping. Oh, no, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have a landscaping plan, but we always really overdo it with landscaping, and I, again, all time, yeah, there's all kinds of beautiful trees in the back because it's all wetlands. We do overdo it in landscaping, I have, that's, that's really our forte. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that it's, it's landscaping. I know you do.
We have been in conservation about the rural.
Yeah, it's called a drop wash, actually.
It's called a drop wash. We'll probably end up cleaning up near two because we'll, yeah.
The green, yeah.
Just, all right, but we just can't use the, the family need, or is that the intention of a single family?
It's always our intention to sell to a first-time home buyer, and we usually, you know, help them through our programs and, yeah, fully educated in pre and post education.
So I understand your neighbor to the right is happy because you're moving property like that. Does your neighbor to the left aware that you're like a foot and a half from this property line, driveway?
Yes, they actually, we're actually approaching on them. So what we're going to do is put the fence right on the property line, which increases, you know, gives them back full use of their property.
Both, both of Butters were here, and I went over, I know them pretty well from the conservation and...
We had two conservation units, yeah.
We had two conservation units, and I went over to see what their concerns were, and what the gentleman on the right, he was concerned that he didn't quite understand what we're asking for the five foot, he thought we had shifted the building over, so now that we're asking for a side gap, although, I said, the city only has a, a parking five feet within a, a property line, because the building's staying in the same place. You see the building, it's there, that's where it is, we're not going to move any buildings. And like I said, the, the, the other, the, the lady on the other side, she's, she was static. The, the, the building is there, like I said, it's an old camp, that's been a building for years, demolition, actually, I believe, we, we were asked by, by, by the city to buy, purchase from the city, but they took it over, I guess.
Before they got the tax taken, yeah.
Taxes, so we gave them a good price for it, and, but that's what we're out today.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, thank you. I'm Rick Staub, and once again, 21 Verona Street, Lynn, I'm the ward two city councilor, chairman of the Public Properties Committee. This property was tax foreclosed property with a dilapidated house on it, that was a nuisance property for years on that street. We put that out to bid with a couple of other properties. Lynn Housing was awarded that particular property, they've demolished the house, and they're going to replace it with a, a brand-new house, which definitely improved that neighborhood. So I'm in favor of, of approving, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing for those in favor. Is anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing for those in opposition. What is the wish?
Right.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mrs. Curly. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carwood's.
Uh, in favor.
Mr. Wooton?
To grant, in favor.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Yes. You're all set, good luck, thank you. We'll take the next case, which is 37 Partridge Street. 37 Partridge Street, petitioner is it Sam, is it Hunt? Attorney Attorney Seamus Vitale to permit the alteration of pre-existing nonconforming two-family dwelling with less than the required area, frontage right sideline, and parking spaces and lot coverage in excess of thirty percent to a three, three-family in an I-1 residential district. Hearing is now open for those in favor.
I'm Attorney Vitale, I'm here, owner of the property, Sam, and our husband, Lee. If you look at the packet that we provided to you, you may note that this property was acquired, it's called a commissioner's deed, which is unusual, I want to just explain because it helps, provides some insight about the prior use of this property. Commissioner's deed results when the probate court has appointed someone to commission to deed the property. The reason for that is, is what's called a petition to petition, and that's when owners of the property disagree. The backstory of this I happen to know because I represented one of the prime rounds. This is the sort of the fable of no good deed goes unpunished. My clients live in the city of Alden, they have a business in the city of Alden, and a relative by marriage worked in their business, not American citizens. They wanted to acquire a property, they couldn't get a loan from a lending institution because they're not American citizens, people who wanted to buy. My clients agreed to go in with these folks, who they are related to by marriage, and one of whom worked at my client's business. Well, there was a falling out at the business. Woman who was in the business... A woman who was in the business, opened her own business in competition to my clients, another story. And my clients had deeded an interest so that the four individuals, two couples, owned the property. But my clients were on the mortgage. But the arrangement that they had when things were co-perspicacious was that these folks would live there and they would pay the mortgage. And they did for a period of time. And then they had this falling out in the business, they start paying the mortgage, and my clients would be foreclosed on. And they stood to lose, A, the credit, and B, the money that they had invested to help these folks get established. I brought an action in the probate court called a petition to partition. And essentially, it says we can't cut the house in half. So what we do is this, we sell the house and we divide the proceeds. By then, the lender was moving to foreclose and there was going to be nothing to divide in half, which was less disconcerting to the people who continued to live there, not pay rent, not pay the mortgage, and occupy the third floor. This is how we come to where we're at. Leep and his wife bought the property with this deed from the commission. When they bought it, the owners had lived on the third floor and had rented the first and second floor. To this day, the tenants on the first and second floor are the same people who were there when these folks bought it.
So this is really your claim family now?
That, just describing what my people, how they got to this.
So they, they aren't the previous?
No.
They haven't, nothing to do with it?
Believe me, if they had known this.
I'm just trying to follow.
No, 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 I'm saying to you, sorry. So those folks are gone, okay? And the commissioner, and it took, let me just give you an idea, all right? Sometimes the cure is worse than the disease. If you look at this, if you look on the deed, the commissioner says that he was appointed in 2014. In other words, I got front with the from the probate court, they appointed someone to sell the property. Three years later, he's selling the property. He sold it to these folks. When they bought it, the tenants on the first floor, there were tenants on the second floor. The only place that was empty was the third floor with the prior owners, who now had no nexus to the property because they didn't own it, they didn't pay the mortgage, and they didn't pay the rent. They just lived there, okay? They're gone. If you look at it, the building exterior is unchanged. There's no exterior staircases, there's none of that. There are interior staircases. Leep buys the property, paints the interior walls, puts in hardwood flooring. For those things, you don't need a permit. But now, he understands that to use this third floor, that has a kitchen, two means of egress, and one bedroom, and is essentially a two-and-a-half-story building, is the half-story, that he needs to do something more. He deals with the building department. He puts in what they tell him should have been there to begin with, house meter, he hardwires it. And I say to him, listen, that you could well be required to sprinkle the building because the building department may take the position that it's a change in the use code. And buildings in that use code could well be required to be sprinkled. He said, if I'm required to sprinkle, I'll sprinkle. But I said, you can't do any of that until you get approval for the use. And this is not an allowed use, even though the building is pre-existing and it's non-conforming. If you look at it, it always had an excess of a lot coverage that's allowed. If you have a three-family, you can cover forty percent of the lot, but if you have a one or two, you can only cover thirty percent of the lot. The building's over there in terms of lot coverage. That's one problem.
Do they buy this for two families?
They bought it the way I just described to you, with the tenants on the first floor and the second floor and the third floor.
But what does the paperwork say?
The paperwork says what that deed says, what the commissioner's deed, he just sold, period. And divided up the money between the people who had been the prior owners. As far as the use goes, that's not up to the commissioner that the probate judge appointed. That's up to the city of Lynn. And when he dealt with the city of Lynn, they said, in order to get approval to use that very unit. So Leep's not a big developer, it's not a big project. It's the same house to be upstairs. What we say is the same use. So I'm just describing, first problem was this one about what would be required to make it a lawful use from the building code perspective? Which really is not the upper view, but the building.
That's right.
The second is, in order to even get to that point where he could do that, he needs to get approval for the use, and that's why he came to you. Now, with that, if you change your use, the ordinance says that as long as you can what you ever had, you don't have to have any parking that meets the current requirement. But if you change your use or you expand your use, then you have to meet the current parking requirement. This house was built like in the 1900s. There's always been essentially three or four spaces that people utilized. Are they perfect spaces as the folks were using? If you look at the driveway, to come in from Parrott Street, people are proud of their parking, I understand that. They don't know if it applies to the bucket rule, but that's what they were parking. And then you can come in from Bruce, which is another street on the other side, and you can come in from the back side. So I suggested to Leep that the only way it could be proved, in my judgment, is if he was willing to do those things, the building department required, and what would be required to satisfy the current zone ordinance. And for that, I can't change where the building is, I can't change the size of the lot. The only thing I'm really looking for is, we come back to this ongoing balance between parking and landscaping. I heard Mrs. Curly ask about it. So I had two plans to do. I had a plan that showed three spaces and I sort of favored that because it allows for more open area, green space, and you're better maneuverably. I have another plan that shows four spaces because you can come in from Bruce Place and park at the rear. But, so ultimately, the objective was to do it lawfully. So I want you to understand that, that's why we're here. And in terms of the criteria, for the one or two-family dwelling, state statute says that you can alter such a building, provided that when you do, the effect on the neighborhood is not substantially more detrimental. And so I would suggest to you that the use by the prior owners of this property is a three-family, I don't believe resulted in any complaints relating to its use. The complaints that came about about this building were there were people living in it, not paying for it, and the people who were paying for it and not using it ultimately bore the brunt of that, and it took a while to extricate them. The way they got extricated is they got sold and so they made these improvements. The top floor's been vacant, no one's there now, and subject to this floor, maybe no one will ever be up there as far as an additional building. But there's a kitchen, one bedroom, a bathroom, a living room.
I don't think they're there. Others, I see, have all of this vacant, the third floor's vacant, so, was he doing some work or what exactly?
No, when he went to find out what it would take, because he discovered that, and they said to him, of course, you're going to need to put a sprinkle. So he said, okay. And then they said, you need to hide wire. So he's had it, it's just proven in terms of safety, he had to hide wire, he had the house meter put in, separate heaters for the first floor unit, the second floor unit, the third floor unit, just three separate heaters, two means of egress, three kitchens. So it's, we're back to when Chairman DuSongo was here. These things occur, and I want you to understand how they happen in the real world. And lastly, I would say this, not everybody's a big developer on the land. I said this before in this part, not everybody's going to be able to live at a beacon site and pay rents or at the gear. The biggest demand in the city of Lynn, not me saying it, but the studies that have been, I sort of kept in my file, when it said, is fifty-two percent of the people who live in Lynn pay rent. And the biggest demand is for affordable rented houses. There are people who, for them, this provides shelter, provides an opportunity to work here. And this is the kind of neighborhood, and I looked at the street list, and I brought it, and I only marked the one I had so I wouldn't lose my place. But this street list is what's on Parrish. This neighborhood has three families, it has two families, it has one family, and it has like a nine or a ten-unit condominium that used to be the library that I went into when I was a kid. And that, that's the use, okay? And in terms of comparison, in terms of how would you want to determine what the effect would be in the neighborhood, I'm suggesting to you that the, there are three families, the use has been accepted, and that many of them, when you look at the list, you would see, ah, on lots of comparable size. So no changes to the exterior. And I have two parking plans, and one of which I derived because I thought I could get landscaped and have some open green spaces. I know that's important for the people who live there. I know it's important for members of the board. And in terms of, right now, if you went by, there's an unregistered, I think Volvo there that can be moved, the shed that's up there would be removed, that would create more space for parking. And as I say, I have a plan that shows three parking spaces and one that shows four. And I would suggest to you that that's why I worded it the way I did with less than the required parking because I know I'm not this, I know this, it doesn't have five. And it can't have five. And so if it's going to have some number less, the question is, what should it be? And to that, right now, with the people that are there, it works. And with a one-bedroom, I've heard in the prior hearings or whatever, this discussion about demand on city services, well, this is not a part of that, which is, if you want to know, shut the lights out here, you want to have some people live here. And the way they can live here is to find an affordable place in which to live. And for some people, that one-bedroom unit on the third floor would provide that housing that they are looking for. I believe it's in keeping with the character of that neighborhood. I don't think it's overly burdensome, given the fact that there are other similar uses there. And in general, the character of that area, as I say, is one of mixed residential uses. They put eight or nine condominiums, like two doors down. And I just think that in balancing this, I think part of what ought to be considered is whether we can provide affordable housing for people who are renters, who are the vast majority of the people who live in this city, okay? And do so with a balance for its effect on the neighborhood, and do so with consideration for the people who are going to live there. And I, this is the last thing, which is unusual for me, and I said this to Leep, okay? That the people who live there today are the people who lived there four years ago, and the people who lived there five years ago, and they didn't move, and they're still there. And so when people talk about turnover, or somebody is a speculator, or they're doing X, Y, and Z, oftentimes, the people who pay rent and live in the neighborhood, they care as much about their neighborhood as the people who can afford to own a house somewhere else. This is within their means, and it serves their purpose, and they're providing for the city of Lynn some services, working here, living here. I think you can balance that with a one-bedroom unit. The prior petition was a three-bedroom single-family. This is a one-bedroom one. If you look at it, we went from eight bedrooms to four, okay? And fourteen rooms, that was actually shrunken size, in terms of reducing it so that the only thing on the third floor, the only thing we're asking you to approve is this one-bedroom half-story unit that, when they quit, these folks didn't put in there and know, they didn't buy it on the theory that it was there and lawful, and not suggested.
How long did they own this house?
2017. I know it took three years for the commissioner to sell.
It's kind of true. How, are they paying taxes on the two?
Yes, right, because it's empty. They can't, they can't lawfully rent the third floor.
But they're living there.
Excuse me?
They're living on the third floor.
No, 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 they're not living on the, no one's living on the third floor.
When did they put the electrical in? When did they redo the electrical?
Well, after they was quiet, when he discovered that in a multi-family unit, you have to have what's called a house meter, the meter for the car. And so when he went to the building department, they looked at the, one of the best records, I said, that the building department keeps, are the electric records, electric vehicles. And so they gave him a permit to put the meters in. And then when he was doing that, it made some sense, rather than a battery operator, it's not that great a leap to just put in a hard-wire system which affords everybody protection. So that was put in. But that's not sufficient if somebody determined under the building code that this was to be a three-family, they could not only require you to have a hard-wire system, but a sprinkle system.
But how do you get electric meters for a three-family when it's only two?
You can get a house meter, and the fact is that they got permit in this city of Lynn electrical department issue.
What they issued, right? They issued it in September. They upgraded the service to 200 amp, and it was to add a house key to the common area. We should have been there because it's a two-family, right?
Yes.
The house key shouldn't anywhere. But right now, there's four active boxes there. So there's four active boxes which would lead meter to leave that there's, it was wired for a three, a three-unit building.
Well, he said it was a three-pierced street.
No, it was never a legal three.
No, I, no, 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 the electrical box, they just added one common, add a house meter, which that's.
Well, it looked like they added a couple more, but I'm not the city electrician.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, he pulled a permit, absolutely, I'm not the city man, I just don't.
Yeah, it was licensed electrician.
Yeah, so, but it wasn't, it wasn't previously wired for three families.
That was one of the divisions.
And the other thing is, there's a, there's a real estate sign on the ground out there, and the thing is hanging there. What's, what's the story with that sign?
To sell?
This is, the question is about the sign. There's a real estate sign saying.
He's selling the house?
No, that's when we bought it, right? That two-family house.